Other substances used besides sand and water?
The chemicals that I was talking about, because I did talk about the chemicals and the reason why we use those chemicals, again, it's a very small percentage. Most of those chemicals are going to be spent. A swimming pool, you're adding chemicals to it every day to kill bacteria and things like that. That's why we can recycle and reuse a lot of that. So primarily sand and water. I think it's like 99.9 percent, but there are chemicals used. And again, primarily, you use something to protect the wellbore, because again, you don't want to cause any damage from blasting sand under very high pressure. Two, you're going to use, you need some kind of proppant, which in Ohio, it's primarily GUAR, to carry that grain of sand that's suspended in that water into those geological formations and hold it. And number three, something to kill bacteria. And even if you look at your hand sanitizers, there's a lot of different things that make up that chemical to kill bacteria. We have to kill that bacteria in the water so it does not form clusters and so that it doesn't eat the hydrocarbons that are down there.
Thank you. Councilman Drennan?
What was that website you said where it shows all the chemicals?
FRAC Focus.
How do you spell it?
F-R-A-C, there's no K, and focus. And I would encourage you to do that and also take a look at new rules in Ohio regarding additional disclosure.
Do we have Chief of Staff Kitchen?
To the Chair, you mentioned earlier about the amount of land you need or how much spacing you need to drill. So if I heard you correctly, if someone learns to lease their land, does that necessarily mean that well will actually be driven on that?
Correct. Two things take place. One, it can be a single landowner that you're dealing with, or if there's not enough acres there, there could be more than one landowner. In fact, by the name of the well, usually you can tell if it says, for example, the Miller Number One, it usually means Miller, which was the name of the landowner that they leased with. It's a single landowner. If you ever see like the Miller Unit Number One, it means that multiple landowners are involved in pooling that particular property. I think it's good that we're a spacing state. Okay, again, I think you're going well beyond the limitations of probably where you're actually pulling that oil and gas. But again, it is landowner's property and they have the right to be compensated, whether it's oil, gas, whether it's timber, whether it's aggregate minerals, it's their property and they've got the right to be compensated for what's underneath it.
Thank you. Are there any more questions from members of the committee or members of council? If not, we'll take some from the audience. If we can use the microphone, Suzie, by right next to you, that microphone, whoever wants to... Yeah, that one there. I think we could have someone, if it's... Can we just make sure it's on? Terry, is that on?
I can speak out on.
No, no, I need to... It's for our record, we record the meetings, that's why, so...
Hello?
Tap it here.
Hello?
Okay, it's on. Thank you, go ahead, Terry.
How many chemicals are you using? I like to disclose your on how many chemicals? And where are you planning to buy the water? And how many tons of water do you use for one well? And when you said that no well is the same, please explain.
Okay, and I just want to make sure that we do frame where her... I mean, this is an educational presentation, so some of the specifics on a specific well, questions will not be able to be answered, I'm guessing.
Every well's different, let me start with that, because underneath the ground, the geology's completely different. What's underneath the ground here, a geological formation, by the time we cross the street could completely pinch off or disappear. And that's why every well's different, because the thickness of the rock is going to vary significantly. Also, the number of different geological formations under each property is going to vary significantly. The number of chemicals per well, that can average six to 10. And again, when I'm talking about something that kills bacteria, look at even like your hand sanitizer, there may be four or five chemicals involved in that that kills the bacteria, okay? Every company will use something different, okay? The amount of water that's used, and thank you, because I don't think that I brought that up, on the hydraulic fracturing, is that when you're asking for the water underneath that one or the drilling? Okay. Drilling, it's going to be a couple hundred thousand gallons of water. Again, it's going to depend on whether it is a vertical well, directional well, or horizontal. So every well's going to be a little bit different. On a traditional vertical fracture, it can be a couple hundred thousand gallons of water. On a typical horizontal lateral, it can be a couple million. And again, it depends on the thickness of the rock, it depends on how far out that horizontal lateral is going to go. If you think about that horizontal lateral though, and when I said it replaces 32 vertical wells, if you just do the math on the average water for a vertical well, multiply that by 32, we're actually trying to reduce the amount of water that we're using today. The only difference is that we are using it all at one time. Most of that is going to be recycled or reused. Where we purchase it, it can be from a local landowner, as I said earlier, it could be from a township, it could be from a county, it could be from a city. So there's a lot of different ways and places that you can buy water. When you compare it to all other industries that use water, we use very, very little water. Because again, during the drilling operation and even during the fracturing operations, those are one-time water use, so we don't need water on a daily basis in order to produce those oil and gas wells. So it'd be a one-time water withdrawal.
Thank you, sir. Next to Terry, if you could identify, you can go up to the microphone and identify your name for the record.
My name is John Williams. According to Ohio Revised Code 1509.20, that has to do with flaring. The first paragraph of the code says flaring is illegal in the state of Ohio, but if you read down to the bottom of it, it says that unless the technology is not available to eliminate flaring, that they are allowed to do it. The federal government has recently, well, the gas and oil lobby have taken our federal politicians and somehow they've managed to make it a law that they don't have to have this equipment on these wells until 2015.
Well, I can address the flaring, and I'm not sure, I don't have the law book. Let me explain to you why we flare.
Why, I know why you flare.
The reason why you're going to flare is when you are drilling, okay? And I'm one of the instructors for our firefighter class, so we talk to the emergency responders about the flares and the fact that they should never go up and put out that flare. When you're drilling into these geological formations, again, every well's different. You may get a well that comes in at a couple thousand PSI pressure, or it could be very little. You physically don't know what kind of pressures you're dealing with until you physically drill that oil and gas well. It is required by state law to flare. You also want to flare it for a very short period of time, because you have to have an idea of what kind of pressure. Once you have an idea of what kind of pressure you're dealing with, it also gives you an idea of what type of engineering equipment needs to be put on that particular well. So state law requires that you flare it, and again, you always have to have an idea of what kind of pressure that you're dealing with. 500 feet can make a difference from a very high-producing pressure, high-pressure well to a very low-pressure well. So it's very important, but it's done for a very short period of time, and that is usually during the drilling operation only, once you have done that. Now, the other time where you may see a flare is in the event that you are working on the well, okay? That paraffin that I was talking about, oftentimes that's a blessing, but sometimes that paraffin, because it is wax, okay, and it can clog up down the hole, so what you might be doing is servicing the well and literally steaming the pipe and getting rid of that wax or paraffin. So while you're servicing the well, you may need to flare that gas while you're servicing the well. So flaring is something, it's called a controlled burn.
Right.
And again, it's something that we express and describe very specifically to the fire departments, because again, that's something that they should not be trying to put out.
Right now, the state of California said flaring is totally 100 percent illegal, they don't want it, because it emits toxic fumes and vapors. Without that, and the equipment only costs $180,000 per well, the wells cost five to six million, and they're not willing to spend $180,000.
A vertical well may cost 300,000. A Berea well, which is very shallow, it could be $150,000 for that well. So every well's different, and you can't put the economics on a horizontal well the same as every single well in Ohio. The reason why you flare it, again, it's for a very specific reason, and it's for a very short period of time.
Should the city of Youngstown consider putting a well in a neighborhood without that equipment on it, ever?
I think if you look at the 275,000 wells that have been drilled in Ohio, where you have had flares, a temporary flare, that is extremely important.
Are those frac wells?
Every one of them are.
275 of them frac wells with the chemicals.
275,000, 80,000 have been hydraul... Are we talking about flares or hydraulic fracturing?
Both.
Okay. There have been 80,000.
Flares related to hydraulic fracturing and the chemicals after 2005.
There's been 80,000 wells, well, first of all, again, during the drilling phase, you, if you listen to my presentation, you have not hydraulically fractured yet. So during the drilling phase, you have not hydraulically fractured, you're going to flare the gas for a very short period of time until you get a good understanding, and state law requires that, until you get an idea of what pressure. It's not a permanent flare, it's a very temporary. Keep in mind, if you're an oil and gas producer, you want to capture all those molecules, because that's how you get paid.
Yes.
So you don't want a permanent. So the drilling is done, now the engineering takes over, and that is where you're going to engineer based on the amount of pressure, whether or not it's natural gas, whether or not it's liquids, you're going to design the engineering equipment on each well that is going to be very, very different.
Should the city of Youngstown permit a well without that equipment in the neighborhoods? With using the chemicals they're using today and horizontal hydraulic fracturing, should it be allowed in the city, within the city limits?
Okay, are you asking about flaring or hydraulic fracturing? Should they allow one or the other, or both?
Flaring. Should flaring be allowed inside the city limits, using the chemicals they're using today on a horizontal well? Within the city limits in neighborhoods where they're going to flare these gases and fumes off?
Flares within urban areas are regulated different?
They're still the same.
So I think the point here, we need to... Rhonda's probably not going to be able to answer every question, and also, this comes back to state law.
We're just going to have to agree that we're going to disagree on this.
But Mahoning County, if you look at the number of wells that have been drilled in Mahoning County, you haven't seen any problems dealing with flaring or hydraulic fracturing? None. 80,000 wells in Ohio in the last 60 years.
We are going to move on, we're going to move on to the next question.
In the last 60 years, not a single case. That's a pretty good safety track record, and we would have seen problems showing up in the last 60 years.
Ma'am, would you please identify your name, and you can ask your question.
I'm Judy Versham, and I have a question about horizontal slickwater fracking well. How many times can one of those wells be fracked?
Typically, as I said in my presentation, typically, it's going to be done once in the life of a well. Once you've created those fractures, okay, but on the horizontal, remember what I said, is that's why it may take up to two days, because you have to fracture... Do you want me to finish? You need to fracture the section, you put a plug in it, fracture a section, so it may take up to two days per lateral, typically done once in the life of the well. That's why there's one water withdrawal.
Okay, it was my understanding that was, that a well could be fracked up to six times.
If you are producing out of multiple geological formations, which we typically don't do in Ohio, each zone may be fractured, but they would be fractured independent of one of each other. In Ohio, we typically do not produce out of multiple geological formations at one time.
How many wells would typically be put on a pad just for the sake of efficiency?
It depends on the geological formation. If you have leased, let's say, 1,200 acres, or let's say 620, because that's the minimum requirement. If you move over 50 feet, I may not be able to put a lateral here, because the geology pinches off and disappears. But I might have a thick piece of rock that extends a mile this way. If I want to try and put one this way, same thing may happen to the geological formation. So the geology will dictate that. It does make economic sense, if you can, if you're a landowner, and they can drill multiple wells, this is what they do offshore, and you can drill multiple wells from a single location, you've had your land disturbance done once, you've had that drilling rig done once, you've had the wells all fractured once, so you're going to try and maximize, but it's all going to be dictated by the geological formation. One landowner, you may be able to do two or three laterals, another landowner, you can't even do one.
Okay, well, let's say best-case scenario, there's a truckload, truck, truckloads of natural gas under your property, okay?
We don't want to get it all.
Natural gas, it's a vapor. And you want to get it all, so you've got multiple wells on a pad, you're going to frac each one a couple times, because you want to get everything out of there, okay? How many truck trips do you think it would take to get the water there?
Given 2 to 8 million gallons per frac per well. When a Walmart is built, there's a ton of trucks that come into Walmart bringing an inventory.
Excuse me, would you let our speaker give her example, please?
But an oil and gas well would be no different. You have to bring, you have to bring that inventory in order to complete that. No different than you have to stock a store, so you're going to have a lot of trucks at one time, and then you're going to have very minimal. On the natural gas side, you're not going to have it. Natural gas is not trucked, it is sent in pipelines.
And the chemicals are trucked.
The water is trucked, again, in the drilling operation, we use water one time.
I understand in the life, in the round.
In the next 20...
approximation.
In the next 20 to 40 years that that well produces, you may have delivered water twice. Once...
Trucks.
I can't tell you, because every well's going to be different.
Thank you, the question has been answered.
I don't know.
Ma'am? Excuse me.
One time.
She said she cannot give you an answer, the question's been answered. Thank you very much.
It's a one-time.
Please, please.
Ask what a Walmart or an inventory.
Please take your seat.
Hundreds of trucks, I don't know.
Is there tylenol in the water that goes in the well?
We're moving on to the next question, ma'am, thank you.
Is there xylane?
Ma'am, if you do not, if you do not take your seat, I'm going to ask security to remove you.
Are there human cars?
Final warning.
In the car vehicles?
You're disrespecting our speakers.
They're...
You're disrespecting our speakers.
Do you need to use constituents' loggers there?
Excuse me.
But have you, you haven't heard, you have not heard of any employees, you have not heard of any human...
Rhonda, please, Rhonda.
The shit detector is like, wow!
Man, I'm a constituent, I don't know how many trucks.
This is, this is very embarrassing and appalling, because when the last speaker spoke, they were afforded respect, and it upsets me that this group will not respect an opposing side, and it really upsets me. I wish we would have been more respectful.
I don't know how many trucks.
I know, I know.
I don't know where, where'd the water come from?
Please, ma'am, thank you.
We're not adding...
Is there another speaker that would like to speak?
Thank you.
Sir, if you could identify yourself.
Jonathan Sidney. Did I hear you say that there was no explosion in Bainbridge?
The physical explosion, there was no fire and there was no explosion. Let me finish, because again, we work very closely with the fire department, I know I was personally out in that location. The house physically shifted off of its foundation, but there was no physical explosion. There was no fire, and fortunately, there were no injuries.
So after the council Googles the Bainbridge incident tonight and reads the full story of the explosion, why should they have any reason to believe anything else you've told us today?
I think that there is reports that are available to the general public, and I think that the council can view those reports, the final reports on the Bainbridge incident. It's very big. I think that they could also contact, I believe there's a fire chief back here, they can also contact the Bainbridge Fire Department, and I'm sure they would concur with the story that I, not story, with the facts that I presented.
I encourage council to do research tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, I'm Suzie Byersdorfer. I'm a geologist, and I was a mudlogger out in California in the mid-'80s, so that technology of looking down the hole was certainly not around then. So definitely the technology has advanced. So I have a couple questions. You know, you said that this is the same as the old ways, but this is much more heavy industrial, as far as the volumes of water, the pressures of water, and the amount of chemicals. I had a question, you showed a diagram with the different plugs. So at each plug, in that, each area, that's 2 to 5 or 2 to 8 million gallons for each of those sections. Is that correct?
I can't be for sure on the exact volumes of water on each one. What I can do is give you an overall water volume and not on each section, because as you know, it may be different depending on that particular geological formation, exactly where it's located, and the thickness of the rock. And again, that's going to vary, even if you're going out a mile, that's going to vary significantly. So to put it exact, what I can do is give you an approximate on the water on an overall fracturing job for a vertical or horizontal well.
Okay, I guess I'm wondering, you know, you hear this statistic of 2 to 8 million gallons per well, and I didn't know if that's, I mean, I'm genuinely asking this, is that per well or is it per job?
That's going to be per well, so it would not be per...
Okay, not per section, not per section.
Right, and usually it's, again, between 2 and 5.
Right.
Again, if you look at a vertical, and when you're looking at a couple hundred thousand gallons of water, you multiply that by 32. The difference is we're using more water at once on a horizontal lateral, but overall, we're using less water than if we were going to drill those 32 vertical wells per lateral.
And then wouldn't you agree if, say it was 5 million gallons, that at half a percent of chemicals, that would be 25,000 gallons of chemicals?
Again, I think...
A percent of.
It is less than .5, and again, if you're considering GUAR, which is agriculture plan, if you're considering part of that as the chemical, you need to look at the makeup of those chemicals. GUAR is going to be very important. Obviously, we need that proppant, okay? It's extremely important. Obviously, we need something to kill bacteria, that's extremely important. But just because you're using chemicals and they've got a very specific purpose does not necessarily mean that it's bad. You want to kill the bacteria down there, you have to have a proppant, and you absolutely want to use some chemical that is going to help protect the wellbore, absolutely.
Right, so it won't rust. Okay, I had two other quick questions. You said that most water is recycled, and I, I've heard that, but what type of data or where would I go to find out, I mean, where have you gotten that? Because I did not know that was occurring, other than being in the states.
Well, I can say that from an experience as, when I worked for an oil and gas producer, that again, water's extremely expensive to purchase. It is, it's expensive. Even in our fire training, we use about 15,000 gallons of water. Water's expensive, you have to pay for water. And so anytime that you can recycle and reuse it, companies are going to. Our company did, most companies out there can do that, I think it's pretty general knowledge within the industry. Why wouldn't you recycle and reuse it? Why would you go to that additional expense and buy new water when what you've got is perfectly fine? Recycling's important, I mean, it's important, not just from an economic standpoint, but I mean, it makes sense, you've already got it.
So onsite, there's tanks where it's put in, and then...
They're called, what, they're total dissolved solids? Yeah, they're called frac tanks.
Okay.
And as a mudlogger, I mean, you should probably be pretty familiar with that, being, you know...
Well, you know, I was there when the drilling, I wasn't there during the production point, so I was there when there were drilling muds, and again, they just ran into the pits.
But frac tanks have been around, I mean, a long time.
This is California, too.
But frac tanks, I mean, that's what frac tanks are for. I mean, it is not only to bring the water on location, but the frac tanks are also to take the water off locations.
Okay, and then my last question. I had a question also about the flaring, because I have heard that they flare the methane, the natural gas, right now for two reasons. One is because it's not worth as much, and they're going for the wet gas, and the other one is that we don't have the infrastructure in place. So please address that.
Again, the two times is usually during the drilling operation, because again, you don't know what kind of pressures you're dealing with when you're servicing the well. Oftentimes, if, in Ohio, you can't just simply have a flare go. They used to, and you can go back and read old data where they would have an internal flare going, because you're absolutely right, in order to produce the oil, you would have to produce the natural gas. Every molecule is worth something. Even though today, the natural gas prices are not nearly what they were, I mean, it was $14 an MCF not too long ago, we're down to about $2 an MCF. Why would you spend all that money drilling a well? And if you will, just let your product go in the air. You want to capture, you want to capture those molecules so that you can sell it. Even if it's at $2, $2 an MCF, you're going to make money off of that.
So you're saying they are capturing this now?
Why wouldn't you?
I don't know.
If you're an oil and gas producer, why wouldn't you?
Okay.
That's the only way you're going to make money, is to sell the molecules.
Well, not if you're going for the wet gas or the oil, though.
But it doesn't matter. You're still, you're suggesting that they would just let money go up in the air.
They would.
Yeah. If they're working on it, and again, sometimes if there's a pipeline-related issue in order to get the product to market, so those are the times where they are going to be flaring, again, usually in the drilling operations and during the service operations.
Would anyone like to ask a question that has not yet asked a question? If you would go over to the microphone and identify yourself, please.
Hi, my name is Tom Svetkovich. I understand that about 20 percent of the fluids are left within the laterals. The USGS came out with a report last summer saying that there was an uptick in low-level earthquakes in the Midwest, about 20 percent, that had been associated with injection wells. So we have injection wells causing, yes, causing low-level earthquakes that weren't predicted or whatever, but we now know that there is an association there. A recent study in British Columbia found that the fracking process itself is also causing low-level earthquakes. So my question is, with the toxic material, left in the material, along the, left within the laterals, how many laterals are produced per hole? And we also know that well casings go bad. I believe Schlumberger in '09 reported that it was 30 or 40 percent go bad in 16 or 30 years. That is to say, they at least lose casing pressure. They're not leaking all over the place, but they are beginning to leak. So my question is, I'm concerned that the materials, in both cases, the fracking wells themselves and in the injection wells, have toxic materials underground under high pressure, and that the path of least resistance will be the wells themselves and these multiple perforations of the earth. Is this an ongoing concern, perhaps not to even our generation, but to generations to come?
Yes, a lot of questions there, and you provided a lot of stats that, first of all, I can't confirm those stats. Other than, again, if you look at just the seismic activity, let's just talk about Ohio here, and you look at where those 400 seismic activities took place, and let's say there's the potential of the Youngstown one, I wouldn't call that 20 percent.
All right.
Okay, okay, so again, and I'm not familiar with the study, so that would be one. In terms of... In terms of the fracturing and, and can that affect generations ahead of time? I think given a track record of 1.2 million in the United States, wells that have been hydraulically fractured since 1947, 80,000 times here in Ohio since 1953, we would have seen a single case of where any kind of groundwater was contaminated due to hydraulic fracturing. There has not been a single case, none. And again, if you understand what fracturing of the rocks is, it makes sense why there is not. When it comes to the wellbore, again, this is where it comes down to rules and regulations. When I tried to explain the well construction, we're not using hollowed out tree trunks anymore, okay? Were those casings failing? Probably. Today, if you can look at the multiple casing structure that is put in place here in the state of Ohio, the reason why you have multiple casing structures in place is to protect the aquifer and multiple casing structures in the event of a casing failure.
Well, thank you. My concern is that with so much drilling going on, that it is indeed, would perhaps induce failures.
But 30 years ago, and all of those wells were hydraulically fractured, we drilled 6,000 wells in one year. We've, last year, it was 460, so we didn't see it at, at the height when we were drilling 6,000 wells and even before some of this technology that we can see today. So we're actually drilling fewer wells, not more.
One last quick question. Do you have any idea of what the density in the Utica Shale will be? Will there be a well every 40 acres, every 20 acres, or is it too early to tell?
Ohio law requires a 620 acre lease.
Separation between each?
No, that's what's required to put a lateral. That is going to dictate by geology. As I stated very early on, where Ohio is right now, we're in the leasing and exploration phase. The more idea, we have an idea of the thickness of the rocks on particular pieces of property, how far it extends, how thick it is, will probably dictate that. Many landowners' property, they will not have a thick piece of rock that you can drill horizontally because they will not be able to extend out a mile. So there are still many vertical well potentials on those properties. In other properties, they may be able to drill multiple laterals because that geological formation may be thick this way and it may be thick this way. And so you really have to get a good idea of those maps that I was showing, in every area is going to be different. So there's not going to be an average because it really is. Just like there's not an average, I get asked a lot, what's the average well produce? You really can't put that because there's such a big difference from well to well. And again, even in, within a community, one well may produce primarily crude oil across the town, that well in the same geological formation is producing only natural gas. We, we have no way to dictate that plant and animal life that was down there and how much of it was there in a particular area. And that's what it really comes down to. So you don't know until you physically drill the well.
Thank you.
If there's no one else with a quick, did you have one? We'll take one. Terry, Terry, can you identify yourself and we have to keep the record?
Terry is from Youngstown. Okay, there's a documentary called Gasland, dealing with this fracking or the gas industry that doesn't give your industry a good light. Does your industry have something, a documentary that I can look at so I can weigh the pros and cons?
Thank you, and the answer is yes. It's actually a response to Gasland and it is a science teacher out of Pennsylvania. It is called Truthland and she went back and re-interviewed many of those same people that were in the movie Gasland and I think it gives a very good look at the real facts or some of the misstatements that were made in Gasland. So I would encourage you to look at Truthland. And there is also here in Ohio, it's called Energy in Depth Ohio, and they also have a lot of information on there about Gasland and several of the other movies and I would encourage you to go there as well.
Okay. We'll take one more and then we're going to close.
I had written something else down on the side.
Susie, can you identify?
Oh, yes, Susie Byersdorfer. I'd written something else down here about the seismicity. I was in Ravenna last night and there was someone talking about their frames shaking off of their walls and, you know, just their house shaking because of the seismic. Two questions. Is it only the company that has hired the seismic company that gets that information or is the ODNR, the Ohio Geological Survey, do they also have access to that seismic so that we can get a better understanding of the subsurface here?
That is very confidential information, obviously.
Okay, so it is just--
The reason for that is because what the companies do, you may spend 3D seismic, for example, it may cost you $50,000 to run a mile of seismic this way. You're going to do it in multiple directions because it's like an instant replay and you get a different view. You don't want to drill to a shadow. So that information, because you can take that data and create those underground maps. Keep in mind that these companies have already spent a lot of money leasing the property, they may never drill it. So they want to have access to what that geology looks like. Now, will a company sell that data to another? Absolutely. What is, what ODNR does keep though, are logs, which will have--
You're familiar with the logs. I mean, from the drill, from the well.
Exactly, which gives you a really good, a log is, is going to give you a really good interpretation of the porosity and permeability or the ability for oil and gas to move through geological formations and you run that log during the drilling operation and it really gives you a good idea of how you're going to design, whether or not, number one, you're even going to produce that oil and gas and number two, you can design your hydraulic fracturing job based on what that log looks like.
So could you tell me then, who would be liable for damages done to houses because of the seismic?
The producer. They are the ones that sign the lease with that landowner.
Okay, so the lease, leasing--
So even if they contracted, yes, if they contracted with a company to do the geophysical data, that's still their subcontractor, so that oil and gas operator at all times is liable.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, I think that concludes our, I think we'll probably need to consult with schedules for another meeting. I want to thank Rhonda, our speaker, if we could give her a round of applause. Additionally, I would like to thank those who did stick around and those that were respectful of our speaker and respectful of each other. I know this is a hot topic and it's emotional for many of us and I thank you for your cooperation and respect to your fellow citizens and to our speaker. Do I have a motion to adjourn? I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
This meeting's adjourned, thank you.